Wonderful thing.
Do you have an extra pen?
I do, and here, take that one. And we're gonna, as soon as we do the minutes, we start here, okay? Sonia, you already tell ya. Yeah, okay.
All right, hello, everyone. Just give us a second. No Jake, somebody call him. Hey, Ken.
I see you going for your phone. Are you doing it? Thank you.
Yeah, ask him.
Because then we'll be a four-man board without him.
That's a problem.
And that is a problem.
We aren't gonna be on the phone, but I don't know.
Okay. I don't see the minutes here, but they're on here for approval.
They're on there for approval. I read through them.
I didn't find anything wrong, did you? Okay.
I didn't either.
So I'm just gonna talk into the record for Sonia. I'm just gonna say that I'll come by the office and sign them if we vote to approve.
I don't know what's today. June 14. All right.
We got a Zoom host operator over there.
Uh, I know that.
And what's the scoop with Jacob? Does anybody know? He's not taking a text either, or?
We're just gonna start. Thank you for coming. Thank you all for coming for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight's meeting. It is, uh, it is, uh, June 14, 2023 at 6:34 PM. And we are at room 320 at the Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. My far left, our member, Richard Sample. Far right, our associate, Troy Larson. Our clerk, Jim Akabachi. Myself, the chairman, Nazir Al-Khulasi. Also present, Mr. Ken Buckland, our town planner. We're short-staffed, our members today. The way it works, you have the right to be heard with five members. We could just open the hearing and continue it until to be heard. We can't argue it. If we argue it, it continues with four members. And you need four out of five if you hear for a special permit or a variance. We have a member, Mrs. Devenese, she probably gonna go on the phone and be present. Hopefully, she does. And at least you could vote next time we continue the hearing. That being said, we'll continue with the...
If she comes on Zoom, we've got a full board, right?
Right, hopefully. All right, we're gonna start with the approval minutes. For the minutes, for 5/24/22.
I've got them here. Three members have already agreed that they've read them and found no errors. So I make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion, Mr. Akabachi, to approve the minutes. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sample. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the minutes is a go. Okay, we go with the continued public hearing, 11-23 for 3127 Cranberry Highway.
And that, we have a letter in the, is this being continued?
It is, and like to have it continued July 12th. So that's not next week, but the week after. And I also sent an email to Sonia extending the deadline for the variance decision.
Yeah, you need a decision, deadline extension, you send it.
Yep.
You have it on you?
We got it.
It's in email, Sonia.
The letter? Uh, okay.
We got it.
And then she has the email. It said extended till the 19th, I think I said, like the week after.
Okay, all right, very good. All right.
Make a motion to continue as requested.
Do you have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So you move to July 12.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna take a couple hearings out of order because it's a long one. So we take the short ones. We're gonna go to H-23, Mr. Paul Summers for 25 Oak Street. So Summers, wanna come forward, please? I'm gonna make the small ones, like go for the small ones. Hopefully, they go with four members because the big hearings most likely are gonna drag too long. So we're gonna try to pick the small ones first so they don't have to wait through the, here, through the night. All right, let's read it, Jim.
And we have to read this in, don't we?
Yeah.
"The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 14, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571 to consider petition number 20-23 for variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 628, Note 2, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Paul G. Summers of 6 Oak Terrace, Wareham, Mass., proposing to add a second-floor addition to existing dwelling located at 25 Oak Street, Wareham, Mass., that appears on Assessors Map 39, Lot T25, in the R30 zoning district."
Very well. Name and address for it, sir?
My name is Frank Westgate. I did the survey and the plan work for this project.
Okay, sir?
Yes.
Your name for the address, for the record?
Paul G. Summers.
All right, very well. So why not tell us what's going on, sir?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, and I think he covered it in his opening remark there. The, this demolition started, what, it was more than a year ago, wasn't it?
Oh, several years ago.
Several years ago, and the Conservation Commission got involved. And the applicant didn't realize that he needed to go through them in order to get the permit. So that's what delayed the whole thing. And we got through them, and we do have an order of conditions. And now we're looking for this. We thought that this would be a special permit, not a variance.
Right. Okay, as, what is it?
So I think, looks like we're after FAR. That's all it is.
Okay, uh, let me, so you're doing a second story and a front addition?
Yes.
Right, I'll show you the drawings. You have the four plans here in front of you?
So if I understand correctly, you meet all the setback requirements. The only thing you don't meet is the floor area ratio, the floor area in relation to the lot size.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, very well. Before, just go quick question, Troy. You have problem with this?
I don't have a problem.
Richard?
Not this time.
Jimmy?
My only question is, what's the allowed FAR and what's the...
25.
What is it?
25% the proposed.
25 is allowed?
Yes, 33 is proposed.
33 is what's required and 25?
Proposed, 25 required. They're proposing 33.
Okay.
Because you don't want a second floor, it makes FAR.
Well, first and, first and second floor, right?
Yes.
Just for the record, we had a case that went to court.
The coverage count should be right there on that, on that sheet, on that page.
Yeah, I just hadn't got to it yet, so it was easier to ask. Go ahead, with the record.
We had a case law for that not long ago, and the court agreed that it's fair to add the FAR for second story. You probably, did you guys get the decision?
Yeah, I...
It's not the time to discuss it, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
All right, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this project? Anyone against this project? Anyone against? Okay, I hear none. Anything you wanna add, sir?
I'd only say that all of the renovations are within the existing footprint.
Yes.
Okay?
Richard, you see, wanna say anything before we go forward?
Not at this time.
We're gonna close, so.
I'm good.
Fine, okay.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, I have a motion to close by Mr. Akabachi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir Al-Khulasi, aye.
Okay, I move to grant relief under, under whatever section it is.
The relief for variance as presented.
Yeah, as presented.
Okay, and, uh, and the finding as it meets statutory requirement for MGL 40A, Section 10. Patty, if you add this, please, to the conditions, I mean, to the findings. All right, any discussion on the motion?
Nope.
No discussion? Okay, so...
Make a motion to grant, need a second.
We need a second on that.
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
400.
Now we can go to, um, now we can go to 1723 Keegan's.
Fisherman's Cove.
No, I can't get it open for some reason. My phone won't let me to open up anything.
The town website isn't working right now.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I can't get anything, so. Give you one of these.
Sorry, check it back.
It was an hour ago when I was reading it, but it's not now.
No, temporary unavailable.
Did you give me your phone?
2404. Is that Popeyes? You want, you wanna wait for five members, right?
Um, yeah.
She should go on there.
Yes, can you on?
Hopefully, she should go.
I'm on that one, too.
All right, how Mr. Kevin Keegan's here? All right, can we go forward with that?
Yep.
Okay, 17-23.
This one I was looking for.
You want, thank you, Richard.
"Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on June 14, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571 to consider petition number 17-23 for variances and/or special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Section 621, and Article 13, Sections 1350 and 1360, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, for Kevin Keegan, care of Julian Morton, Esquire of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., who is proposing to increase the height of the dwelling unit by two feet, attach new decks with stairs, and rebuild a shed with a larger footprint at 16 Fisherman's Cove Road, Wareham, Mass., 02532. That appears on Wareham Assessors Map 3, Lot 1010B, in the R43 zoning district."
All right, counsel, very well.
Thank you. Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. So we are here today, and thank you for the prompt, on several matters, but I'm gonna try to be very specific. So the easiest thing is to go in your packets to the exhibit of the building commissioner's denial letter, because it is three different items, but they all kind of go together. So just want you to take a look at that.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Muskegon, they're proposing to renovate the property, and that includes taking off the existing roof, raising it two feet, framing the exterior walls higher, and adding decks to the back, and then moving the location of the staircase as well as shed. Now, this, um, this project, obviously, you can see when you're looking at the plan, you're in coastal banks, you're in conservation. So this is going in front of conservation July 5. And the, what we would hope is to be able to take a look at these three items and then go to conservation and see if there's anything else. But let's start with the first one that the chair, that the commissioner speaks to. So the new stairway on the southwest side of the building will encroach on the 20-foot setback. So if everyone, so you have big plans, right?
So encroaches on it, but it's, so...
It encroaches on it.
They got the 20-foot without the stairway?
Yes, so if you look at the plan, there's an existing staircase on one side in green. Do you have the big, he's getting the big plan out?
Okay.
Yeah.
See that existing one? What he's doing is he's actually taking that away. That's already non-conforming. He's taking it away and he's putting it on the other side. So the new stairway will encroach on the 20 feet. The idea that this is like the entranceway and is ease of access for where the driveway is. So it's, it's really actually just switching it to the other side. So again, it has to be a variance because it's a new non-conformity, but in my mind, it's kind of like you're switching the staircase to the other side. So that is the first one.
Yep.
Just speaking to Chapter 48, Section 10, and the variance standpoints. This is on Fisherman's Cove, and it's also abutted. You can see on two sides with Buzzers Bay, and then you have coastal dunes on the other side. So this is a narrow lot that is abutted by two, kind of environmentally protected areas. So I would say it's certainly unique in that respect, in the paved, where they need to go in as well. That paved driveway, I know that the engineer, who's Mike Pimental, not here tonight, but they're actually, I believe, gonna do an apron, and that's gonna be seashelled. So we're working with conservation regarding that piece.
Okay.
The second one is that we are intensifying the non-conformity in that the fact that we're raising the roof up to two feet. Now, I believe this is a special permit. It's not, it's less than 35 feet, so we're not hitting the 40, 35-feet height restriction. You can see there on the zoning, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you're saying, okay. So it's going two feet up, and that's to allow, there will be a deck, and obviously, these were cottages that were built in 1950s, so aesthetically pleasing. So it's raising up that, but it's not hitting the height of the, needing a variance exceeding...
So what's the non-conformity? It's an existing non-conformity that, and they're just, it's, you know?
It's a pre-exist, because, well, maybe the commissioner considers...
Is it setback, or?
What I, what I thought is because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family house, a small, now we're lifting it up, but it's not FAR, it's nothing in that respect.
You're increasing the height. It's non-conformity, well...
It's already a non-conforming structure, so we're intensifying it.
It's an existing.
It's, yeah, okay, we're splitting hairs here on this.
He's nodding. It's...
No, it's, if we find another, that requirement, it's a special permit.
Because it's already non-conforming.
Because it's existing, you can't trigger it.
Correct. So that is number two. I do believe that that's a special permit. I don't think it needs to raise to the variance level. It's not detrimental to the neighborhood. And then the last one is in regards to the shed. So on the plan, you can see there is a shed on our property that's very close to the property line. And my client would like to make that shed bigger, so it'd be a 10-by-14 shed to replace the existing shed that's kind of falling apart. Now, the idea of making it bigger is that he does not have any garage space. Also, it's a, it's a bulkhead, so there's no basement. So as far as storage, snow blowers, mowers, um, yeah, and due to the, just the nature of the lot, again, that would be, I would say, not like a huge change, just increasing the shed as well. Were those, those are the three things.
All right, very good. What do you think, Rich?
From what I see, as far as being... From what I see, as far as being non-detrimental, detrimental to the neighborhood, I see the neighbors are closer. I, I kind of agree with what's going on. He's in a tough spot, so I'm good with it.
Troy?
No questions right now.
Jimmy?
I'm good with everything, I think, unless some neighbor brings up something that I haven't figured out.
All right, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? Okay, there's none. I think I'm okay with this.
Yeah, I, um, I make a motion, we close the public portion of this hearing.
Very well, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. Okay, wishes.
I make a motion to approve as requested with standard conditions.
Do you wanna do all variances, or we go one by one, counsel?
Um, I would say...
One by one?
One by one, just for the record.
All right, let's go for the setback first. On the setback, uh, on the variance.
On the roof?
Setback.
The stairwell, the stairwell, okay.
Stairwell.
Special permit, I don't find it not...
No, that's variance.
Huh?
It's a variance.
What'd I say?
The stairs, stairs is a variance. A special permit to shed.
Okay.
And the height.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a motion to grant the variance?
I move to grant.
Okay, we have a motion to grant the variance for the setback for the stairs. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. That's gone.
Okay.
On, on the height, the two feet, does the board find that, not substantially not detrimental? So we could act as a special permit, as well as the shed, and we could do it separate. Let's do one at a time. The height of two feet of the ridge, does the board find it not that, substantially not detrimental?
I find it non...
Non-detrimental. By motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich on the two feet extra on height. Okay, so all in favor of being a special permit, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that's a special permit. On a special permit, what's the wishes?
So we get the stairs, the roof, and what are we doing now, the...
Now, the two feet extra on ridge. I need a motion on the, on raising the ridge, the ridge, right?
A move to allow the two feet.
All right, I have a motion to allow the special permit for raising the ridge for two feet, and the finding substantially not detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. That's gone. Going to the shed, does the board wanna act as a variance or as a special permit? How does the board find the application?
I find it a special permit.
Okay, he find it not detrimental to the neighborhood, and it's a special permit. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It's a special permit. Okay, on the special permit, what's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to grant as requested.
Okay, we have a motion to grant with the finding that it's not substantially detrimental on special permit. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Thank you, counsel. All right.
We're being easy, because we gotta save all our energy to beat Popeyes up.
Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, there's a problem with the town website, so there may be not a lot online connections.
Who's online?
Nobody.
Okay. Okay.
Who's on first?
Ken is. Ken's on. No Veronica yet.
Let me just have a go.
Maybe not.
Well, she could be trying, but it won't be working.
If you want her on, you may wanna do it by phone.
Just want to...
Thank you, sir. Well, if we're gonna only, if we don't...
Let me see, if at least she could go for the opening, then she could sit next time. 2404, wanna come forward? 18-23, Raymond Young. Mr. Young? Yeah.
Yeah. So if we move forward, we're seeing with four?
Well, no, no, unless you want to. I'm gonna wait, hopefully, she goes for the opening, so we could apply the Mullin Rule next time, and this way, this way she could sit on it next time. But if we open four, she can't continue.
We need her here to open it in order to get her on it.
You wanna continue with four?
Yeah.
You wanna go for four?
Yeah.
Everybody likes Popeyes.
Okay.
They're confident.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
All right, very well. Got your wishes.
So...
17, okay, so we have...
1923, right?
18-23, Raymond Young, site plan review, special permit, variance, special permit, 2404 Cranberry Highway.
Thank you, Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street.
Hold on, we gotta read it.
Oh, I thought, okay. I thought he was right at...
Pretty sure we got the right one. No, let me see. 1923. Be with me a little bit here. Got it. This is a Lockwood project?
No.
What have I, what have I got wrong? 1823 we want? Okay, that's one that has its own books. I'll get there. Hang on to that till later.
All right.
This is for you.
Ah, thank you.
This is for you, sir. "The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 14, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571 to consider petition number 1823 for a site plan review with a variance/special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Section 320, and Article 15, Section 1520, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Raymond Young, care of Attorney Julian Morton of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a single-story slab-on-grade restaurant with proposing to construct a single-story slab-on-grade restaurant with multiple drive-through lanes at 2404 Cranberry Highway.
Just hold a second. Hi, Veronica. Hi, can you, I'm just going to put you to set for the opening, just for this matter and another matter. Do you mind? Stay online. Just, as long as you hear the opening, so you could sit next time. All right. All right, for the record, we have Mrs. Veronica DeMenez on the phone. So we will reread the advertising and this way she could participate next time. Because if we read it, she's not here, she can't participate. Okay, Veronica is on the phone, let's reread the advertising.
Cross the Ts and dot the Is.
And it says 7:00 PM.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 14th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 18-23 for a site plan review with a variance/special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Section 320 and Article 15, Section 1520 under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Raymond Young, care of Attorney Julian Morton of 184 Main Street, Wayham, Mass., proposing to construct a single-story slab-on-grade restaurant with multiple drive-through lanes at 2404 Cranberry Highway, Wayham, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 108 Lot 2A in the Industrial Zoning District.
All right, very well. Veronica, you could put the mute button and listen to the hearing as you're driving.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, very well. She's on.
Attorney Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. So we are here today on this project, which is on the site, 2404 Cranberry Highway. If you would like to pull up the plans near Packet, we have two things in front of you. Again, I like to start with that denial letter. So we have a variance we're looking for and then site plan review. Now, we know this isn't going to be a one-meeting hearing. We have, our engineers should be submitting their responses to peer review by the end of this week. The peer review had sent their review of the actual site, which talked about specific comments they had and questions. I also spoke to the fire department and Mr. Smith didn't have comments back. He had initial comments and then is going to be having his final certification next week. So there's certainly things on the special permit review, the site plan review end that I don't necessarily want to speak to now. But I'd love to go into the use variance, which we are in the industrial district, so.
Is that, you sure it's not general commercial?
It is.
She's right.
It's one of those. Sorry.
Looked at 2017?
Yeah, so it's in that district where there's commercial right there. I mean, we have a Wendy's right across from us, right?
That's commercial, but across the street, it's general commercial.
Yeah, across the street, they rezoned it and they didn't take it across the street. DB's Restaurant, Noria, the bank.
Are they still industrial?
It's all industrial.
Yeah, so.
One side of the street is industrial, the other side went with that special overlay so they could put the mall and they didn't carry the.
Yeah, it's certainly something to look at, I would say, the town to look at in the future. But so obviously, restaurant and restaurant drive-through are not permitted. They're no's on the zoning table. So we're seeking a use variance and, you know, just going into the fact of that area, obviously, we're trying to propose a Popeyes restaurant, a drive-through, the plan. And I don't know if, Ken, are you able to put things online or no?
No, I can't get the town website.
Well, we have the plan here and then you have the big sizes. So you can see that there's several drive-throughs. And so we believe this isn't a, something that would be detrimental to the neighborhood, that the variance is warranted considering the nature of this area. We have Walmart across the street, we have Chipotle, Starbucks has a drive-through, all of these areas. It's a hub certainly for people coming off the highway and then going on, and then as well as locals. So having this there is going to give the community as well as visitors another option for fast food and being able to choose their options. So we don't believe that it is all detrimental. We haven't heard any sort of negative comments from a butters. And most of the butters are in favor of this because it also will help their business, like the gas station and obviously the car wash going in. So if that could be something that at least is preliminary voted on, so we know that that's okay with the board.
Hi, it's up on the screen now.
You got it? Great.
All right, good. All right, keep going, counsel.
Sure. So I guess that's one piece that I would request tonight if we could possibly do a preliminary vote on that piece, not closing the full hearing because we were going to be going through site plan review. So this site, we do have our engineers here, so again, I don't necessarily want to go into that unless you want your peer reviewer to speak to some of the things that they said. But the engineers really haven't had a chance to go back and forth on some of the nuances there. But if you surely see anything and want to bring that to our attention, we welcome that.
All right. Well, first things first, I believe that your engineer has been talking to the Charlie?
No, it's Phil.
Consulting? Who's our consulting?
Name's not Charlie anymore.
He's here.
Phil Cudero.
We actually, like, we have the response, yeah. So he sent a letter. And our engineer has, it should be within a couple of days. There's just a couple of little items. We wanted to make sure we're perfect on there.
All right, so they're working it together?
They're working together, but surely if there's something that you guys see on the plan, we can bring that in the conversation.
We'll go one by one. Troy, what do you have?
Nothing right now.
Jimmy?
As far as the site plan review, obviously, I see both sides here, they're both smiling and they've been talking. That's a good sign. As far as the use goes, I don't have any problem at all with the change of use. If we can dispense that this evening, I think it would be a help to the applicant. I think it's a good use for the site.
Richard?
I agree.
I agree with Jim.
Okay.
Akabachi.
All right. First things first, let's do with the variance on the drive-through. So this is a, having drive-through, it's a variance, so one asked the public who's in favor of this variance to have a drive-through. Anyone on the public in favor of that variance? Anyone online? Ken?
I can't speak to it as counsel, but also resident.
Gabrielle Ryan.
All right, anyone against the variance for drive-through only, not for the? We have Sonia online.
She just disappeared quick.
All right, so anyone against the variance? Okay. So I think we should get the variance out of the way. Don't you agree, counselor?
I do, yes.
And we'll let the engineer hush it out on the site plan. I'll take the plans with me. Don't remember, they work on take the plans.
We're looking for a date of July 12th again, just so you know, because there's also.
As long as your engineer works with the town consulting and put it together.
Yeah, there will be another variance that we've submitted to you for the sign.
Sign?
For the sign. So it's going to be on the same night.
Can always come after. I mean, the sign, you can, you could always come after with the sign.
Yeah, it's already submitted, so it's going to actually be on that night, hopefully.
So we'll hear on the 12th.
Yep.
All right, Commissioner, anything you want to add on that thing? Okay. All right, let's do the variance part and we'll send the counselor and the applicant away to hush it out and we go from there. Is that good? That sounds good.
Works for me, works for me.
All right. On this matter, so on the variance part, how are we going to do this? Let's close the variance public hearing for, just for the drive-through.
We're going to close all public comment on just regarding the drive-through?
Yes.
So we're going to dispense with the drive-through and there'll be no further discussion on that?
Correct.
I so move.
Okay, I have a motion.
I second.
On Jim's second by Rich to grant the variance for the drive-through.
We're closing the public hearing.
Sorry, closing the public hearing for the variance. So by Jim's second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Rich, okay, and Jimmy, aye, and myself, Naziai, it's closed.
Do we need Veronica?
The restaurant and.
Want her opinion?
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes, just say aye.
No, no, to close the public hearing portion of the variance.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yeah, everybody said aye. So we could close without you.
Okay.
All right, so it's closed.
So now I make a motion to approve the variance for a drive-through.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yep.
Does Counselor have something to say?
So the first one, did you do for the drive-through or the restaurant? So there's two.
Drive-through.
Okay, so the Commissioner was saying, so his denial is for the restaurant use and then the restaurant drive-through. Those are the two.
Okay, two.
The next one should be restaurant.
To do, okay.
Because it's industrial district, it's actually a no for restaurants.
So they can have a drive-through, but now they got to get a restaurant to go with it.
Yeah.
That's just the way we did it, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to close the public portion.
Let's vote on the variance for drive-through.
I thought we did.
No, on the variance. So we have a motion by Jim to grant the variance for drive-through. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Aye, and myself, aye. So the variance goes for the drive-throughs. On the variance for the restaurant, although I think it's a general commercial, but that's fine. Let's discuss this. Anyone on the public want to speak for a restaurant in favor or against? Okay, I hear none.
I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing. Anything relating to whether or not the use as a restaurant is allowed won't be further discussed.
Okay, do I have a second on closing?
Second.
Richard, second. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Veronica?
Abstained.
She's abstaining and aye, it's closed. Now, on the restaurant.
I make a motion to grant the use for a restaurant.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Veronica? She's aye on the restaurant and myself, aye. So the restaurant carries and the variance carries.
Did you abstain on the?
Not only can you have a restaurant, you can drive-through it.
Great. Did you abstain though on the drive-through part?
Drive-through, she abstained.
Okay, correct, all right.
She abstained on closing the public hearing.
That's right, but she wants the restaurant, but she just didn't, she wanted to, you know.
All right, so restaurant is 500, drive-through.
She's a grandmother today. She wants to be a little bit, you know. Today, she just had her first, a grandchild, that's why she's not here.
That's a good reason not to be here.
Congratulations, Veronica.
Congratulations. And congratulations to our chairman.
Yeah.
Oh, me too, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome, Veronica.
All right, so on the site plan, so let them talk and we see you.
Do a motion to continue.
So we need a motion to move that to the 12th.
The, just so Veronica can hear, the decision deadline is August 5th, so we're already, we're within that timeframe.
I move to continue until the 12th of July.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So site plan review is for the 12th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's out of the way.
I had my knife all sharp and to cut Popeyes up and we were too easy on them.
Okay, 19-23 Harlan Morton, special permit or a variance on West Boulevard.
Police is going to be the hottest police in town, is it?
Yeah. Let me take this without me, I got to go over this that comes with me. Give me this, Jimmy.
And this is you for Popeyes?
That's for me, I want to.
Take home, okay.
You want to take the plan home? It's less to take, it's less.
Then you have a building.
Anytime we can make the file smaller. Okay. So.
West Boulevard, 66.
Bill, we've been easy on everybody and so, you know, you have the last chance for us to be mean, so.
No, there's another one.
Okay. You're out of your system. Which one are you?
66 West.
19-23, I think.
1923 Helen Morton.
Yes.
Story Estate, blah, blah, blah. Special permit. You got Jeff over already? We had a couple here, but I think we put them back. Here you go, sir.
Thank you.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on June 14th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wayham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 19-23 for a variance/special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622, Article 13, Section 1352, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Harlan Morton Story Life Estate of 3 West Cart Drive, Hopkinton, Mass., 01748, proposing to construct a rear addition on the existing structure at 66 West Boulevard, Onset, Mass. That appears on Assessors Map 1, Lot 688, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, it's yours, sir. Name and address?
Good evening, the Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, 2B on West Central Avenue in Onset.
All right, so quick review, what are you doing?
We are here tonight to re-speak special permit. We were first here two and a half years ago with precisely the same project. The board were, in its wisdom, saw fit to grant us a special permit. Of course, that was the very onset of COVID. It became difficult to find contractors to do projects or do anything. And the permission under the special permit expired. Now, so we are here to refile, we have refiled and we are here seeking your permission for the exact same project as we did two and a half years ago.
All right, very well. So I believe, I remember that very well. We granted this and I guess they couldn't get a contractor, it just lapsed. You came see us last time, we asked to file again.
Too late to ask for an extension.
I was here a couple of months ago to ask for an extension, yes.
All right, there are degrees in lock coverage from 69 to 58% and they're increasing the FAR by 1%. It is an existent non-conforming. If the board feels it's so not detrimental to the neighborhood, we could act upon it as a special permit. Troy, what do you think?
I feel that we should act on it as a special permit where it was approved already.
All right, very well. Rich?
I agree with Mr. Lawson.
Jimmy?
I'm fine with this. I'd like to rub it, stamp it through. I understand the circumstances that have them here tonight.
All right, anyone on the audience want to speak in favor or against this project? Yes, come forward, please. Want to sit down at the mic?
John Kellibrue, 64 West Boulevard, right next door. So this is the same project that.
Just direct your question to us, not to him. That's how it works, unfortunately.
He's the one who's going to, who will answer me. Is it the same project as the one as before?
Same one, right? Same, exact.
So then I have a couple of questions. Before, we agreed to a couple of things and they weren't, as I know, in writing, but during the meeting, we agreed to.
Okay.
I want to make sure those same things are still in agreement. One was, the northwest corner is not paved.
Yeah.
And I want it to remain not paved.
Okay.
And that was agreed to. The second one is, the paving goes from the 64 to 66 West Boulevard. It touches both houses. And I think they're taking this up and it's going to affect my paving. And I want to make sure it's as good as it is now, you know, if not better. I don't want it all of a sudden to get water in my basement or, you know, have it all cracked and all that. And that was agreed to before, so.
I understand.
Saying that.
The first.
I think we've so stipulated the previous agreement.
Same agreement, you okay, you get, your client's okay with it? All right.
So, and finally, I'm in favor of the project.
Good, good, that's good.
Thank you for your time, sir.
All right, but before you leave, just give me the condition, sit down, please. So you want that the pavement to remain unpaved, which section?
What's that?
Northwest corner, each side.
The northwest corner.
Northwest corner.
So you want it to remain unpaved?
Unpaved, yeah.
And what's the other one?
Is the, there is pavement between the two houses. I want to make sure the pavement that's mine is undisturbed or if it's disturbed, put back to, you know, how it was. Not a, please, no, please.
Make sure the pavement for, what's that, what's your address, sir?
64.
64 West Boulevard is undisturbed. Okay, very well. All right.
Or put back in the condition that it's in.
Okay. Undisturbed, okay.
So are you in fact in so requesting granting them permission to disturb your driveway as long as they restore it?
I would like to be consulted before they do that.
So if it gets disturbed during construction?
It's not, in clarification, it's not a driveway.
Sir, to us?
No, it's not a driveway, but it's paved, yeah.
There's a, it's just kind of a paved swale between the houses.
All right, so if it's disturbed, they got to replace it the way it was?
Understood.
All right, very well. All right, anything else, sir?
I don't know, is it? You call me back.
No, no, I just want to write them down. Ma'am, she's, you want to come forward?
Thank you, thank you for your comments.
You're dismissed, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Denise Hickson, 5 Fenton Street, Hopkinton, Massachusetts. I'm also in a butter to the story project. In general, I'm in favor of the project. However, I do have a question. On the floor plan and elevation drawings submitted by Mr. Lockwood, on the east elevation, it looks like there's two doors or two windows or something on the back of the house. And when you look at the actual floor plan, there's one door to the shed on the back and there's one door to the shower on the south, shown on the south side. So I just wanted to clarify, are there two doors or two windows back there or what's going on?
There's a door, there's a door into the storage.
Answer the question.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, go ahead.
Through you, Jim.
Yeah.
There is a door to the, to a storage closet and there's a door to a, into the addition proper.
So the main entrance to the addition proper is on the east side at the very back. I thought it was on the south side because that's what showed.
There are, there are two doors.
Okay, thank you.
One on the south, one on the east.
Okay, so there's two doors.
There is a second door on the east, which just.
Mr. Lockwood, just keep it to us. Can't talk to her. Can't be talking. You gotta talk to us, both of you. That's the rules, unfortunately.
I know it's the rule.
All right, so you understand that, ma'am?
I do, so.
Are you okay with it?
I'm going to just make sure I have got this right, if that's okay with you, Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
One door on the back goes into the addition proper and one door goes into the shed or storage area. And one door on the south elevation goes into the addition proper and there's a second door that goes into the shower on that side?
Mr. Lockwood, a door go to the shower?
There's a shower shown on the floor plan.
Yes, there is, through you.
Like an outdoor shower?
There is an outdoor shower and it has a door-ish.
It's kind of like a gate, take, take thing? Yeah, okay.
You get that, ma'am? Are you okay with that?
Yes, I am okay with that, thank you. My second question is, was the lot surveyed at all prior to make sure that the setbacks that we've got?
Yeah, we have, we have a survey plan.
We have a survey plan, but was it surveyed officially? Just asking.
It was done by Mr. Bremen, 1111, 2020.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's been surveyed and stamped. Thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Anyone else?
Okay.
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to close. I have a second.
Second?
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, nazi, aye. Carrie's.
Okay, it's closed. I make a motion to re-grant as previously granted with the standard conditions and the notes that we talked about, about impavements and encroachments, so.
All right, so we have for the condition that for, that the northwest corner that's unpaved towards 64 West, for the neighbor, for 64 West Boulevard to remain unpaved and the part that's paved that belongs to 64 West Boulevard, if disturbed, to be installed back the way it was. That sounds right?
That sounds what I heard, yep.
All right, and we will, we will grant, we will, and we believe it's not so detrimental, we'll act as a, as a special permit. So do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. On the special permit, how's the board feel? What's the finding? So we're gonna act as a special permit, not advance. We did that. So on the special permit.
So we're gonna grant?
Grant the special permit and we find it substantially not detrimental to the neighborhood? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Carrie's. Thank you.
Still, are we still keeping?
Yeah, she's on, but we don't want to bother her. I mean, she's listening. We get 400, so.
We got four.
Four. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure you do it this time, though, not lapse.
Absolutely.
All right, very well. So that's gone. Now is the challenge. 21-23 Angela McCoen, site plan, special permit, variance, 386 Main Street, Wareham. Ivanka, you on?
Yeah, I'm on, yeah.
All right, very well.
Thank you for hanging in there, Veronica.
Yeah, please hang on for this one. She's on.
But I want to get this.
Yeah, take your time. 21-23, the last one? On the 386 Main Street.
2123, and I have a whole bunch of plans. You want the big plans? Here's a bigger set for you. Big set for you, big set for you. These are the way. Should I offer them the smaller plans? There might be more.
Yeah, how many do we have?
Just more.
Still have six more.
Not to interrupt, we have smaller plans too, if any of the members like the, the, these? No, okay. Everyone likes big ones, so I'm fine.
Know how much fun it is just rustling with these?
Okay. That's what the requirements are.
I do most everything on my phone, so anything big that I can get ahold of, I appreciate. The zoning board of appeals will hold a special hearing on June 14th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the multi-service center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 21-23 for a site plan review, special permit and a variance from the requirements of Article 3, Section 320 and Article 15, Section 1520, under the Wareham zoning bylaws. Angela McGowan, trustee of 388 Main Street Realty Trust, care of attorney Jillian Morton of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass, proposing five duplexes to an already existing four-family located at 386 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. This all appears on assessors map 61 lot 1079 in the Wareham Village 2 zoning district.
Excellent. It's attorney Jillian Morton.
Sam Iomelli with J.C. Engineering.
And we do have the Apkins here too, but, so you have your plans in front of you. I want you, again, I always start with the denial letter and I can give you some more background on the project. So this project has an existing four-family. Probably people drive by it all the time. And the clients ended up purchasing the property and they are looking to, they've already started obviously renovating and redoing the main structure. And when J.C. Engineering got involved to figure out how many units and in this district. So we, we have five duplexes here. The building commissioner referenced Article 3 use regulations, which, and if anyone has a regulation, we can pull it up. It's, frankly, it's confusing. It's, it's something that I think needs to get looked at. So there's an existing four-family there. And then we, by right, and even in the planning board's letter, that the comments that they said, we can have 14 units on site. And so when you're looking at that lot, it could have been something where, what do you do? You add 14 units to this, to this existing structure? That would not go with the nature of the neighborhood. So my clients thought, wanted to think of a plan that would fit with the nature of the neighborhood there. This is also going to be an owner occupied and that it's going to be not for sale, the units, they would be rented. So there's a plan there in place. We believe it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. I know there's been a lot of comments regarding where the access and we'd be happy to go into that. But we don't have any peer review at all, yet. So I would ask, I guess, on the site plan review again, we don't even have the initial letter from the peer reviewer then for our engineer to review. So we can certainly take comments regarding the plans, but as far as the minute details, that should come to a point where we have responses back. I don't think we have responses back from the fire department as well.
Very well. About, yeah, I read the bylaw. Apparently, the bylaw does allow the density. However, it allows it on a, on a structure.
Correct.
To separate it, will require a variance.
Correct.
The other question I'd like to ask, I mean, that's gonna go for a long time, of course. The other question on FAR, what's FAR, lock coverage and, and impervious? Lock coverage and building coverage?
Yep, it's on that plan. I'll let the engineer answer, but it is on that zoning table.
Yeah, page 3, bottom left-hand side. Building coverage is 20%, which we're just under and lock coverage is 50%, which we're also just under.
Okay, so you're good with those, so we don't have to worry. So the variance, you want to seek to separate the building?
Yeah, I mean, the idea would be, again, it's something like, I think should get looked at, the bylaw. It's allowed in this district to then combine it and have 14 units in that area. Is that really what the downtown, what they wanted? So I understand some of the concerns and stuff from the butters and, and from the planning board's letter that we just got. So we haven't formed a formal response back from that. But it's, you know, there, we want people to come develop these properties. This property, and I remember, was, it was a kind of a problem property. There was a lot of drug use there and things going on there. So when the client came in, they want to really make it look nice and certainly the, the house itself is, is coming together. So we have renderings of the units within your packet. That should be the last. And this is just a proposed, I think one of the comments from the planning board was saying like they didn't like the colors. Obviously, that's not finalized. So, you know, it's, it's one of those things that's on, in the packets at the very end, so.
Now, let me ask you something. The planning board has come, some decent comments.
Yep.
On the grade entering. I asked the engineer coming in. That's pretty steep coming in. What's the bylaw allows? What's the rules in our town for the, for, for the driveway, for the incline, like, isn't it 1% max?
I didn't see anything specific to the max slope you could have. We kept the grading around the site. So the grading within the paved areas is a maximum of 10%. It does not exceed 10%.
Great, but coming in the driveway and short, you go from 20 to 22. Well, you go from a street 18.8 to 20 to 22 within like 50 feet. That's very steep.
And we achieve that by, if you see on the grading plan, page number 5 there, we're also proposing a secondary retaining wall between the front and the existing structure there that would help achieve us that, help achieve that 10% slope.
There are current parcels nearby that have access from Main Street even closer to the intersection. So I just want.
I understand that has to access, but if.
No, just something I want to say for the public to hear as well. I know one of the comments was about the, the historic and, I don't know what the language is, historic and aesthetically pleasing wall, the wall that's, that's supposed to be historic and aesthetic character element of Main Street. They thought that wall, the, the stone wall that's there is something that's of character of Main Street. Obviously, it's not something that's in the code, but there are plenty of breaks in that wall, including what happened at.
That wall needs to be fixed, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, look at Toby Hospital and what happened there, so.
I have.
Go ahead.
I have a question regarding the access on the Main Street and the grade and and, and why has a portion of the property been divided off the property and the access to High Street been stopped?
I can speak to initial part of that. If you look on the deeds, which again is in the packet, that's actually an easement that other property owners use. It's only a 20-foot easement. That's of record for those deeds. So we didn't think that that was, and when Sam was designing it before I was involved, it wouldn't be a great access in and out for the units. It's only 20 feet, so how about, how is the truck, fire truck gonna have, be able to get in there?
We'll get to you. We'll get to you, sir. We will get to everybody.
She should be correct.
Listen, sir, timeout. It doesn't work, unfortunately, it doesn't work this way. You gotta come to the mic. We'll open it to public in a few minutes and you could say everything you want. Again, I want to go back to the, to the driveway. Again, what's our bylaw says, what's the maximum of angle you could have on driveway? I know I just went through a project and we had to drop down the whole site two feet because it can be steep like this. On number, on page number 5, Sam, you're saying it's fixed?
Page 5 is where we show the grading and then you can see that retain, secondary retaining wall in the back allows us to, to keep that 10% pitch.
I, I don't think you could have a 10% pitch.
10% is pretty steep.
It's very steep. You can't, you can't have a driveway. We have a, what's our bylaw says, 1% max?
Well, there's in the subdivision rules and regulations, there's a, a maximum percentage, but I don't know offhand what it is.
I think we'll make a note and have the peer reviewer certainly look into that.
Right.
And have the engineers look at that.
The way it's coming from 18.8 to 22 within 50 feet, if there is, if there is a little bit of ice or snow, there's not one car, if it's not four-wheel drive going through there. And you going down, you slamming on that brake, you're gonna slide right into Main Street. There's way too much of a slope. And I know our bylaw does not allow us that slope, that, that steep slope. Because like I said, I wish I could pull my project. I had to drop my side two feet to achieve that 1%. So that's something very important to address.
Okay.
All right, going back to also to the planning board comment about those people have, those units have no decks at all?
I'm sorry, say that part again?
No decks on these units?
On these new units, no.
As I understand, the planning board said that each unit have to have like 450 square feet of recreational?
Yeah, so.
450 feet of open space, I believe they quoted.
And you have that?
And we spoke about that.
Yes, 450 times the 14 units is only about 6,000 square feet. We have 20,000 square feet of open green space on this lot.
Right, but I, as the planning board says it, explained it, the way I said it, it's gotta be specified for each unit, so it has to be behind each unit. You know what I'm saying? So it's not like you use the open space. I know you have a lot of open space, but they saying for each unit has to have some, some sort of yard.
A specific designated area?
So that's something you have to.
Is that a certain regulation that they have within their guidelines or is it just a?
I read the letter this afternoon.
Yep.
When I came home.
It's not quoted, that's why I'm just curious.
And that's what they saying, so I'm gonna go by what they saying unless you prove otherwise.
Yeah.
I don't want to let everybody put their put-ins, but those things, the input, I just remember reading that letter quick before I left the house. And going to, to pack a lot to visitors, it's, it's a little bit tough. It's a little bit too much, no packing, basically. So you are in compliance, but I'm gonna push it to the board now and the public will go from there. So I'm gonna start by Troy. What do you think?
I really have to read the, the letter a little better.
All right, so we need some, Jimmy?
I'm still stuck on the, on the access in the driveway and the, and she started to reference the deed and.
I have the deed, it's in your packet as well.
Lot 1208 and lot 1079. Who owns lot 1208? I just looked it up on the assessors map.
It's a, it's a T-shaped parcel that was.
T-shaped parcel, that's right.
Yep, designated as a, as a, as a way, a right-of-way.
Yeah, the language in the deed, so I know someone wanted to correct me, is together with the use in common with others having a like right of 20-foot right-of-way leading from High Street into the bump homestead, so-called, into its various subdivisions. So that's the exact language, which is an easement.
So, but nobody's, nobody knows who owns 1208. We can look it up, but right at this moment, the applicant doesn't know who owns that.
Well, it might be on the butters list.
They have a easement on it, but they don't claim ownership to it.
Right.
But regardless, so you're not trying to use that easement at all anyway? It doesn't look in the plan you're using it.
But they have a right to.
I understand, but if they want to eliminate it, you're trying to eliminate it, not use it?
We weren't proposing to, again, issues with, with use and who owns it. And then again, with the width only being 20 feet, wouldn't be able to provide proper. And then again, with the width, only being 20 feet, wouldn't be able to provide proper access and turning radiuses onto High Street there for, for emergency vehicles and whatnot.
Ladies gentlemen, excuse me, hello? Hello?
Excuse me, we're having a meeting here, sir.
You gotta sit down, you have your turn and you can-
I have a question, lot 1208.
You have a chance, you have a chance.
I'm not sure if the sire is enough.
Not, not yet. And you gotta sit quiet a little bit. Everybody will have a turn tonight, another night, until we hush it out. Don't worry, you have your turn.
It does say on the, not to cut you off, it does say on the Butters list. The 1, 1208 is Love Edison and Ed Alls, CEO Dennis Crowley. So, that's what it says with the assessors.
The same owner as 1079, prior owner.
So, that's our lot then?
Crowley was the former owner of 1079.
Yeah, so that's our lot. So, really, we own it. So, we own it, but they have rights away to it.
So, so this project owns the T and the people on High Street have rights to it. It's not the people on High Street own it and this lot has rights to it. It's just, this lot owns it and they've decided for some reason not to use it. And whether it gives you a fire truck access or not, it gives you, in my opinion, much safer and better access to this project. Even if you had to bring a fire truck in from High, from Main Street and another whole entrance. I, I don't understand why that's being abandoned and it's gonna be an ongoing question of mine.
Okay.
All right, it's a lot to hush out. Before we go any further, Rich, do you have a question? Let's go to the public. Richie?
No.
No, all right. Veronica, you there, right?
I'm here.
She's here. All right, I wanna go to the public. Anyone in favor of this project for a favor? No one, okay. Anyone against? Who's against? One at a time, one at a time. All right, have a seat, state your name, your address.
My name is Ray Robinson. I live on 171 High Street.
All right, let me, let me explain something to you. If you tell the board how long you lived there and you paid your taxes and stuff, it won't get you anywhere. So, you wanna give something that makes sense, okay?
I've lived at that house about 20 years and I've paid my taxes.
Listen, I wanna help you out.
Okay.
If you tell us your life story, how long you lived there and how much you good citizen and all this thing, it doesn't work in this, in this zoning. You wanna explain to us why you think it's not good for the neighborhood, is it invasive, is it high, is it short?
I can tell it.
It's unsafe. That's what we wanna hear to help you out.
Well, from my point of view, when you look at that map.
Yes.
And there is a private road that goes from the Crowley house to-
High Street, yes.
I live right by the side of that private road.
Okay.
So, when I look at this map-
Do you use that private road?
It is a private road.
Okay, do you use it?
Yes.
To go home?
My, my driveway actually comes into the end of it. I, I use probably the last six feet, eight feet of it.
Okay, but I believe they propose not to use it and block it, right? Let me, let me stop you. Am I right?
We're proposing not to use it for vehicle traffic.
What do you propose to use it, just pedestrians?
I'm not specifically saying yes, but it could, could be.
Okay, so you, you're not, you're not, you will agree if the permits are granted not to use it for vehicles?
Correct.
Okay, you get, you understand that?
I understand it, but when I look at the map, the houses are against my fence.
Okay.
And it's a flat. They're gonna use that road regardless. And that road is about eight foot from my bedroom window. If you think I'm a little upset about this, you're right.
Totally understand, but let me explain to you. If they propose not to use the road.
It's not gonna happen.
It will be blocked.
Ah, of course.
That's a different story.
No, no, at the entrance of their project, at the property line where they enter their project, we will make conditions. They won't get no occupancy permit unless there's dollars, like maximum three feet, so there's no car could go and it can't be taken down. It will be recorded or be on the deed. So, it will not, if this is the problem of our cars and they agreeing to not use it, we would definitely can condition it and block it. It'll be used only for pedestrian.
Wait a minute, see if I could. Sir, if I'm on High Street.
Yes.
And I'm standing dead center of that private road.
Yes.
Is your house to the right or to the left?
If your, if your back is to the road-
I'm on High Street.
If your back is to the road, my house is on the right.
Okay, so you're lot 1082?
I don't know the lot.
Okay, that's okay. And do you use that private road? Do you exercise your right to use that private?
I use it every day when I drive. My driveway enters that private road and I use the last eight, 10 feet of that road.
So, you use it in and out on a daily basis?
Every day.
And do you know if your neighbor on the other side of that private road?
They use it, that's their only way out as well.
In and out, but it belongs to this project. We've determined that it belongs to this project. They own it and you guys use it.
Yes.
But you don't want them to use it?
No, without an object.
Who's talk, who's talking? Listen, if, you can't talk if you stand in the back. You will have a chance.
What I am concerned with.
Yes.
People in that house now, the Crowley house, use it. There are only two, three cars. You're talking, when you look at the number of houses here, a possibility of two cars per house, that's 20 cars.
28 cars.
28 cars, plus the houses in the Crowley house. Now, so now we got 28, 35 cars going up and down this road.
Correct.
And if they come in at 2:00 in the morning, from my personal point of view, they're gonna be eight foot from my bedroom.
Sir, I, I told you, if the project is to be approved, we will condition it and we'll block that road. They won't be able to drive on it. It will be conditioned.
Then you make me a happy man.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am, next to the gentleman, you wanna come speak? Or who wants to speak against? Okay, come forward, please. Need you add the, your name and address and let us know what you said, what you, what do you wanna say?
Good evening, my name is Paul Sparrow and I'm the owner of 380 Main Street.
Not there.
Ma'am, ma'am, you can't speak on the public. We're trying, you confuse our, whatever-
Microphones are recording?
I'm recording everything else.
So, 380 Main Street is lot number 1083 on the site plan.
Okay.
So, I'm the property adjacent on the left side facing Main Street.
It's the next property up heading towards downtown, same side.
So, from the small amount of research that I've been able to gather.
Sir, if you guys gonna keep talking, you're gonna have to go outside.
Sorry.
Please, you had your chance to speak. This gentleman wanna speak. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you, it's fine. So, zoning bylaws allow special permits only for five units within an existing structure and not for new construction. Is that correct?
Five plus units for an existing.
For an existing structure and not for new construction.
Correct.
So, the owner's proposing something completely out of the realm of possibility for a special permit, let alone a variance request for a self-imposed hardship.
Correct.
He purchased the property with the understanding of its use being for a four-family. Variances are granted sparingly and under limited circumstances. Grounds for a variance are soil conditions, shape and topography. And I'm not sure under which of those that this would, would fall. I don't know if you could-
Okay, and, and I had-
I have a question, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
No problem.
You're right, you're right. So, that's something they're gonna have to prove.
Okay. Adding a unit or two to an existing structure seems reasonable, but completely throwing out the zoning laws and grounds for variances solely to benefit the owner of the lot just seems wrong. All of this in addition, in addition to the fact that the proposed plan suggests three units and a dumpster tight to the fence, which is very close to our home. If you look at the site plan, it's, it doesn't really give a distance of where the dumpster would be, but it's less than 10 feet. And that's directly next to two of the, the entrances, main entrances to where tenants live at 380 Main Street.
Okay.
We're concerned about how this will affect our tenants' quiet enjoyment and use of the property. It would also take away from the beauty of the older homes in the area. The side walls present a blank wall that's going to be adjacent to our property. And I believe that was included in the zoning planning letter. As a firefighter, I do have some concerns about the egress and the incident planning on this proposed project. Exposure from fire spreading to my house and others due to the close proximity of the houses. The grade, I don't believe it was listed in the site plan, but I think it's gonna run into an issue with the angle of approach on fire engines. They can't exceed 7%, and I think the engineer had said 10% was the planned grade to get up the driveway. So, that means coming from a 90-degree angle off the street and going up if they, if they-
I'm sure your captain will give us a rundown on that.
Okay, I don't work for Wareham Fire Department, but sure.
We, our fire department, I'm sure will comment on this.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just worried about it.
I had, I totally understand.
Okay.
There's some good points, go ahead.
And, yeah, I think that's just about everything I had to say.
All right, very well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, you'll have a chance to come back and speak. That's gonna take few hearings. Then, just for the record, when we continue this public hearing, I'm sure it's gonna be continued. You will not be notified. So, you gotta remember the date was set tonight for you to come back. All right, who's next? Sir in the back with the maroon color, yes. Name and address for the record.
Barbara Reed, 26 Highland Road, Wareham, Mass.
Yes.
And at the present, I do live at 181 High Street. We're building a new house that you graciously granted me a, a permit for at 26 Highland Road. So, the house that, our Butts, the property that we're talking about on High Street is deeded with the right-of-way to that property and as well as my neighbor who just spoke. My grandmother used to collect taxes for that right-of-way until she got older and we decided that we should split the taxes up between the three of Butters. If this right-of-way is going to be closed off, that would be beneficial to both of our properties. The traffic, having 28 cars, I don't know where you're gonna park them, where you're gonna park them in CVS. There isn't enough space in that, on that parking to park that many cars. And for five new dwelling units plus the building that's there. The, the permanent block that you, that you mentioned about on the driveway, we don't want pedestrian traffic down that right-of-way. That's not what it's for. It's basically a driveway and, so we want it permanently-
We're not gonna block the driveway. He block it at his property, but if he has rights for pedestrian.
That's, this is, this is what I'm getting to. We'd like them to waive their rights to that right-of-way.
He owns it. He, if he doesn't want-
He doesn't own it. It's owned by the three of us.
Well, he still own a part of it, unfortunately.
Yes.
Let me explain something to you. This is something, if he says I'm driving on it, he's driving on it, you can't stop him. If he's going out of his way to say, listen, I won't drive on it, just let people walk, he's doing every, all of you a favor. Unless you guys go to him and agree to buy it off and have a deed written to you, that's good for you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would like the contact information for both. I think that could be something, once I speak to my client, to explore.
To give him that parcel?
Yeah, I'm not saying anything on record, but we'd be happy to meet and discuss, yeah, so.
She'll explore it with her client, and if our client says, you know what, I wanna make the neighbors happy and give him that, and he'll give it to you.
That's fine.
But they give the three of you. You said there's three people.
There are three, there are three, basically three owners.
Applicant and you and one other, correct?
The gentleman, the just about.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me-
Keep going.
Clarify that. I'm the trustee of the trust that owns, that holds that property. I'm a trust, I'm, the trust has my siblings, my brother who is here, my sister's here and my other sister. My mother is also the trustee. She is in a nursing home unfortunately now. And she, she can't come to these types of meetings. So, that, I would like to explore that as far, as far as the trustee of the trust to see what we can do about closing that off, fencing it off, so no one can come through that area.
Okay, so, this could be explored, no question asked, with the client, with her client. We'll discuss it, we'll go through it and see what they can offer, what makes you happy. So, this is your problem, only the easement?
Yes, that is our problem, the easement.
All right, very well. So, the attorney takes notes and she could work it out.
Can I ask the attorney if they actually have a building permit for what they're doing on the existing building?
I checked, they do.
They do.
They do. What they doing in there, they, they, I went there yesterday and I checked, they have everything in order.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't be able to hear them if they were-
Cause they only seem to work on weekends when the town hall isn't open, so that's why I'm asking.
I believe we went by and I think they put a makeshift window up with the permit in it when they were closing it in, right? Isn't that what I saw from the-
They added a window just to hang the permit, yes.
Didn't they? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Now, if they work on the weekends, not allowed. You go see the commissioner and maybe he'll send them a letter and go by the rules.
I, I was just curious. I mean, it's not so much, they're not making a lot of noise yet.
It's not allowed, it's not allowed.
Yeah, okay. So, all of the construction vehicles are coming on from Main Street? Is that, that's what I understand?
Yes.
From what I'm hearing.
Well, I can't right now. They don't have, they don't have a curb cut on Main Street.
I, I understand, but that's what they're going to be doing.
Yes.
What about, what about the utilities?
Everything apparently will be designed to come from Main Street.
It is. So, the gas line that comes up the right-of-way is gonna be moved to Main Street?
If it's, if it's already underground, now, this is the thing, if they agree to give it to you, they have to come from Main Street.
That's what I wanna know.
If they wanna keep the gas line and they say, we'll give you the, the road, but you give us right-of-way for easement for the gas line, they could keep it. But I don't think, that, that's fresh line, that might work.
We could do a utility easement for the gas line.
Right, so they could say, we'll give it to you, but keep us, give us an easement to keep the utilities.
Okay, I'm satisfied, thank you.
All right, very good.
Do you have your phone number?
Sure.
Next person, please, wants to speak? Come forward, ma'am.
Sorry.
You're putting an email, sir? I'll follow, okay.
And for the record, while he's giving out this information, I got an email informing us that the Zoom, the town hall's website is down and as a result, Zoom is also down. So, anybody that wanted to attend this meeting tonight by Zoom hasn't been able to.
Right, that's why we're gonna continue it. Ma'am, your name for the, and address for the record?
Patricia Nelson. My home address is 6 Ravine Road, Buzzards Bay, Massachusetts.
Okay, and what's your interest on that?
I am part of the trust from 181 High Street.
Okay.
My mother was the primary owner until the trust, trust was created.
Okay.
My concerns are, there's something that I have not been able to find out, is I'd like to know what the, what the area is between the back buildings that are, that are being proposed in our property line on the back of-
Okay, so you wanna know if it's brass, pavement, stone?
I, I'm wondering where the buildings, what, what kind of, what kind of a setback there is.
All right, we, Sam, what's the setback in the back?
Sure, so the closest point would be this, this building here, which is 10.8 from our property line. But again, there's a 20-foot strip of, of the right-of-way beyond that, so it-
T?
From property, her property line to the building would be 30 feet.
Okay.
No, I'm talking about, let's see, this is High Street here.
Mm-hmm.
This is 181. This is our extra lot. This is, because this is a two, there are two pieces of property. One is an unbuildable lot and the other one is 181 High Street. I just need to know what is the setback from our boundary, which is that back fence, to whatever is the closest building to that.
30 feet.
30 feet.
There's nothing but 30 feet there.
We're showing to our property line here, beyond that is the 20-foot strip of, of right-of-way.
It looks like it comes down to a, a real close corner down here. Now, maybe I'm looking in the wrong place. I would need, I would need to take another look at that then. My other question, cause I'd need to look at that more closely. My other comment is that my mother is not, our mother is not able to be living in the house right now. Our, our hope is that at some point, maybe she could come back to the home. And this would be detrimental to her health. I mean, having construction, having the, having people coming through, having, and I understand what you're saying about possibly taking the right-of, blocking the right-of-way, but I just- But I just want to reinforce that, should she be able to come back to that home, that would be detrimental to her health.
We, I, I, we totally understand, and, uh, I mean, if they work within construction allowable hours, it is something, I don't think we, this, at least this work cannot enforce the noise.
Right, I, I'm not even talking about that so much, as I'm just talking about the fact of, if that is closed off...
To see all that changes.
If it's closed off, that's fine, but it needs, there, I need to, like, again, I wanna check on those setbacks myself to make sure that there's, um...
Well, the setback, I guarantee you, bec- the building is 10 feet, and there's that T, that's a 20, it's 30 feet for sure.
Yep.
So while she's, while she's here, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Of the, uh...
Yep.
Ma'am, um, I'm looking at this, and I see this lot, 1208, that you are one-third or one owner in with two other parties, I believe, the T-shaped lot that we're discussing.
Uh, we have, if you're standing in that driveway, we are the two lots to the left.
With the dotted line, 1080 and 1081, right.
Yes.
But I'm, I'm referencing 1208, the T-shaped lot, that's been the topic of this discussion. And I'm looking at it, and it, and it looks like it was originally created as a right-of-way, and at least three lots had access to it, you, the gentleman that was up before, that's a fireman in another municipality, 1079, the applicant's property. But the way it goes over to the property line of two other lots that print on Main Street, 1083 and 1077, I'm curious if those lots don't indeed have, um, some form of right or access over that road to I Street.
That top of that T?
On me?
Excuse me, that top of that T is behind our fences, um...
And it goes all the way across what you referred to as Crowley property?
Which has never been used, I mean, we...
And it goes all the way over to the, the old lady, Mrs., I think her name was Swanson or Swans, she was, she did the ceramics?
On the other side, yes, yep.
Okay?
Yep.
And it goes to that lot, which is 1077. It also goes all the way over to 1083, which is, I said, the, the gentleman that spoke earlier, who's a fireman. Both of them, the way this is drawn, it would be easy for me to conclude that they at some point in their deeds had rights of access. Otherwise, there'd be no reason for it to be drawn the way it's drawn.
I'm not sure about that.
It's actually like it's a road for not just three, but five lots. So I'm, I'm just bringing it up if you know.
Yeah, no, that, that part I don't know. I do know that our grandmother, who owned the property prior to my mother, um, did collect tax money from the Crowleys behind, um, and it was...
I'm sure the fireman's gonna go look at his deed and see if he has rights to it. I know the two family on the other side is owned by an absentee owner and has tenants in it.
Right.
He's probably not present, and he's probably not gonna give a hoot because he can get in and out off Main Street, but...
Right.
Um, if they had the right to drive across that in their deed, we don't have the power to, um, diminish that.
We, um, we did do that deed research and we're happy to get that to the board and the public as well. It looked like there was just the three had that language in there. But, um, I mean, it would be full title searches on all of them really to find.
That's all the...
Pretty easy to draw that conclusion.
That's all that shows on ours as well, is that there were three.
Yeah.
All right.
Those are my concerns, um...
Very well, thank you.
The project seems very large for that area.
We thought, we understand. Let me ask you something, the, the garages?
Yes.
How, how wide are these garages?
Uh, the units are 26 feet wide, and we plan to keep a 19-foot-wide clear area to provide for those two parking spaces within the garage.
How wide is your garage door?
I'm sorry?
How wide is your garage door?
Um, I don't think that's been finalized, I would assume a standard 16-foot for...
How are you gonna get two cars on 16? What's the standard parking space? What's the size of a parking space?
Nine and a half, wide.
By 19?
By 19.
18, 19 feet, so you need 20-foot doors. Correct? Because this is the only two parking you have for that unit.
Right, right, the area with...
Outside parking.
Correct. The area within the garage would, would be the 19-foot wide, and just saying the act in the entrance in there also needs to be that.
It cannot be legit two parking spaces. So like, two cars gotta go in easily, because before you know it, it'll be one car parking in, and the girlfriend, the husband, the wife comes in, and they'd be parking outside, then you've blocked in the driveway. So that, if it's not easable, easily in and out, it'll become a problem. So you guys gotta find a way to make 20-foot, they make them, you know? Now, and we, we definitely wanna discuss the hardship and the variance of creating, separating the building. Let me, let me ask you a question, why did the, your client, council, why your client didn't do one building? It was all these units, it would be a lot cheaper, a lot easier for him, a lot more space, a lot more parking?
Yeah, I would think that that doesn't fit the neighborhood, what I said in my opening remarks, um, at least. I don't think that would fit the neighborhood even less.
I think it would be a lot less congested.
Be a, well, it would be a giant apartment building. So a lot of the complaints I'm hearing is that they think it's not gonna look good, or they're concerned about things, so, and then there's, would be tons of...
Well, we're gonna have a giant building on Wareham Village 1, so I don't see the...
Um, yeah, and then just as far as the parking goes and keeping, we have 50% green space, which I think is still great for that lot. Um, I know there are concerns, I drive by that all the time, I understand the neighborhood, um, but this is what the town has voted in this Wareham district, more high density.
I understand.
So we have 14 units we can put there.
Well, they voted, the town, the bylaw provides for the number of units you have in a single structure.
Right.
It doesn't provide for the number of units you have in new structures. It's in a pre-existing structure, you could add it. I think, depending on interpretation, but if you strictly interpret the way the bylaw is written, and you're asking for a variance from the way it's written, what's written is they have by right 14 units. If they were all in one building and part of it was an existing structure and they were adding on to it. But they're creating, um, 10 new structures that are not allowed. So you're actually asking for 10 variances. And I can answer the question on why they want multiple buildings, because if it was all one building, they'd have to be sprinkled, and that gets very expensive on a building like that.
Is it already being sprinkled?
But the construction would be a lot cheaper for them.
It might already be being sprinkled. I, I need to confirm that with my client.
What's that?
What's that? Is it, is it already being sprinkled?
We never...
The four units? If it's existing, he doesn't have to sprinkle it.
We have to finish the public comment.
He's sprinkling in the four family, yeah, sprinklers.
All right.
Just so you, thanks for...
Before we go forward, I wanna take quick comments from the commissioner when we go back to the public. Okay, and you know that's not gonna happen tonight, so we'll get...
Oh, yeah, that's what I initially said.
I'm gonna call the commissioner. Commissioner, wanna come forward, please? Let's hear from the commissioner, and we go from there. Name and address, please, commissioner.
Paul Turner, Wareham Building Commissioner?
Yeah.
The existing four family is gonna be sprinkled.
Okay.
Cause the amount of work that...
What about the 10...
Uh, the advantage is more than...
What about the 10 two families?
No.
No.
They don't have, but, I, I'm, I'm a builder by trade. If I was me, I'd do one building, it'd be a lot cheaper, but that's, that's the owner.
This is also, I'm not to cut you off, this is owner occupied, like I said initially. So the idea, um, with having separate units there, we're thinking working professionals, this is not like a...
I understand.
Affordable housing project or anything, this is people who necessarily can't buy in this market right now, who need to rent in somewhere safe and clean, and it's owner occupied, which in my experience is, they keep it clean.
Also, I mean, we, we gotta, uh, did the, our consulting engineer comment on to this?
No, that was, again, one of the things I said, that, um, we need his comment, so we're probably gonna need about a month again, um, to then be able to review and also review the planning board comments.
We definitely wanna explore, Sam, on that grade coming in.
Yes, we will look into that.
I know for a fact, like I said, I just went through one, and it was not allowed, it's too steep. And you're coming back around, you have only 13 feet wide with that curb. I don't understand how the fire department gonna like that, or how two cars gonna pass the 13 feet. You, you're coming out on the, where's the, no, so...
Page, uh, page six there, we did model a...
Is it this way?
On the west side.
On the west side there, yes. On page six, we modeled a Wareham fire truck being able to circulate throughout the site, so, um, it, it can be accomplished with what we have here.
Well, we, I understand, but we still have, we wanna hear from the captain or the chief.
Of course.
But regardless, without the fire truck, you have only 13 feet because that curb, and how's two cars gonna pass?
It's, this is a proposed one-way.
And, and who's gonna enforce it there? If that person lives here, wants to go that way, because there's two, a car in the way, what happened?
I mean, there'd, there'd be signage and, and directional arrows, um...
So the fire truck can drive over the sign and around the car that couldn't get through the small garage door to get to the fire.
These are, these are things we have to hush on.
Absolutely, I mean, you wanna look at...
You have a misunderstanding, but that's what I heard.
Yeah, I mean, there's tons of one-ways, look at Wareham Elementary School, right? So there's, and it's tight there too, so I'm just, I understand the, what your comments are about.
13 feet, it's, it's tight. And, and for 28, for 14 units, just to have, even the 18-feet is tight for pavement. Uh, but if the bylaw allows 18-feet, it's 18-feet, I'm not gonna argue this, but I know it doesn't allow 13-feet. And the question is, backing up from that garage, all, all these things, I'm trying to find basis for that variance, why should we grant the variance or not? Also, backing up from any of these garages, you only have 25 feet, so anybody's backing up. So 8 o'clock in the morning, everybody going to school or to work or 7:00.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody backing up, everybody gonna have wait, to wait for the other person to back up and leave, for them to be able to leave, because it's only 25 feet to back up and leave.
Right, 20, 24 feet is what you need for, for a two-way aisle width, so that's...
No, no, like, you, you're in the garage, and any of these duplexes, you wanna back up on that road.
Yep.
And that road's only 25 feet from the garage. So they're backing up, they're gonna hold traffic, because I know there's only 14 units, but there's gonna be a bunch of cars to back up in the driveway and to leave. And if they're all backing up at the same time, it's gonna create a chaos, and people are gonna be fighting and arguing on all this, just because the reason, you don't have enough parking spaces and not enough place to maneuver in that, on that site. So we have to explore this, all these issues, so it's not a problem for us when we come to make a decision. Uh, I'm gonna leave, I mean, what do you, what do you, what do you think, Troy?
I agree.
All right. Richie, what do you think?
Oh, I got a whole lot of thinking going on. We just have a little bit of time.
We wanna, we wanna hear those thinking, I don't wanna be speaking by myself, we wanna hear the...
Well, everybody say...
About the variance.
Yeah, well, you're, let me back up.
Yeah.
I agree with what you're saying, there is a lot going on there as far as how are we gonna come about granting the variance?
Correct.
So, that's where I stand, and I wanna know where we're gonna, how we're gonna approach this.
Okay. Jim, Veronica, are you there?
Yeah, yeah.
So what do you think, uh, I mean, I know you don't have the plan in front of you, but at least you're listening. Do you have any comments so far?
Um, it, it sounds like there's a lot going on, and the parking is always an issue with, you know, parking, so with this. But I'd like to have a chance to just review things.
All right.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question of the applicant. Sometimes, and, and by the way, I believe Wareham has crossed the threshold for what they call safe harbor, and we don't have to accept any more 40B projects as of the last census, next census may change that. But when we get a 40B project in front of us, a lot of times, the applicant knows that the board's job is to mitigate, so they say, "Well, ask for 200 and hope you get 125." Is this applicant asking for 14, hoping they get eight or 10? Or is this a, is this a, "Let's ask for a lot and make you feel like a bunch of heroes 'cause you held us down to fewer units?" It's kind of a rhetorical question.
Well, I, I can answer, I know you said it was rhetorical.
Or is it just a matter of we wanna get the maximum amount?
No, I'd love to answer that, I think that, um, the idea is we wanted to see the engineer propose. Um, my client has expressed to me that he is not bullheaded, saying that it needs to be this much or this design. Um, he really wants to work with the town, he's been in front of you before, um, lives in Onset, and this is something that, um, he was certainly willing to work with, with the board and the engineers and the public. For, and that's why I'm writing diligent notes on, on all of the abutters and their concerns.
It appears to me that there's money to be made developing this site, but it may not be at the rate of a total of 14 units. That's just what I'm seeing on first look. That's what I'm seeing on first look, I would, I, I would, I'm sure as a developer, I'd wanna get every dollar in rent I can, and every dollar means every unit, but, um, I think that this, this project's gonna have more of a chance of, of, of favorable review if it was, um, maybe a little less dense. And some of the questions that have been brought up this evening are addressed, it's, um... If you drive up, you look at the New Y in Plymouth up there, up in the middle of the woods, and see what's being built, and, I mean, I remember we used to put three hens to a pigeon hole to make eggs, and, you know, that's what, that looks like chicken coops to me, you know? It, it's a bunch of racks and a bunch of holes, and they're building that in all around us, and we're not building that in Wareham, and, and hooray for us, um, this is still a hell of a lot better what I'm seeing in our surrounding communities, but I think it might be on the, on the aggressive side, I guess is my best comment.
Bring this to your client, see what he thinks. Uh, Sam, the zoning setback line from in the front?
Mm-hmm.
What's that for? What zoning setback?
Uh, this is village district, so average of five, uh, five residential structures on either side. I'm sorry?
Zoning setback, so that's Wareham Village 1 in the front, what's one?
We're Wareham Village 2.
Across the street, this is Wareham Village 2.
Okay, so half of that is on Wareham Village 1?
Nope, nope, that's zoning setback line for, for these structures. So that's, that line is, uh...
Yeah, but it's 20 feet, why you have 63?
It's, it's average, it's, uh, average of five structures.
Or minimum. And that's fine, average five or minimum of 20 feet, so I'm, I'm surprised you picked that.
Minimum, I didn't think it was an option, I thought it was, uh, front setback. Number four, front setback in village district shall be average setback of five residential structures on either side of subject property.
Yeah?
Wareham Village 2, yep.
Cause it's gonna be either direction, mind the average, and that's your setback. Certainly is a demand of residents.
That's good. All right, uh, going back, wanna add some, commission? No, you're good?
I'm good.
All right, we're going back to the public, who wants to speak? Ma'am, you wanted to speak, and...
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, you said, no?
I think he's, um...
Who wants to speak?
Mainly, I just had a question.
All right, come forward.
You gotta come up and say your name and address and put it in the microphone for the record and...
It's my fiancee, I'll just come up again.
Is that okay?
It's just a... I, I thought...
You move your lips and she'll talk, but she's gonna talk in a very deep voice from the back of the room.
Fair enough. Uh, the don't stick your name again.
You gotta do the microphone, is it gonna be your name or her?
Paul's about 380 Main Street. Um, so one of the questions I had was just, uh, units 10, 9, and 8 on the site plan, and the distance from the fence that's built. Um, the existing structure on the other side of the fence at 1083, 380 Main Street, I'm concerned with how close those units are going to be to that structure, and I was wondering if it actually is, um, not, not meeting the minimum criteria.
It is, the setback is 10 feet there.
The setback is 10 feet from any existing structure or property line?
They could do that.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
All right. All right, uh...
Just, I'm just gonna make a, any, any of you folks that are here, by the way, the zoning bylaws are online. You can go to wareham.mass.gov or whatever it is, it's... You can go to wareham.mass.gov or whatever it is, and look them up, and, you know, you can read the bylaws yourself. It helps us as a board when people come up in front of us and they've done their homework. We're not a feel-good board. We're kinda like to try to enforce the rules, you know? Somebody came up and said, I'd feel good if they painted the house yellow instead of green. Well, that's not our job, but you come up and say, the bylaw says 10 feet, and you're building at 8 feet, now you've given us real meat and potatoes to work with. So feel free to go online and read the bylaws and see how they affect you. Thank you.
All right. What do you guys wanna do, like...
I'd like to continue.
I know we're gonna continue, but there's important notes we have to send the applicant with.
I think she's got a dictionary where...
Right. We have...
Throw all the plans out and draw something new and come back and see us sometime.
Now...
That's not a good idea.
Do you wanna, just ask how the board feel about the variance for the heck of it? First of all, that's the most important thing, to give a variance to separate them, right?
Yep.
Otherwise, we're not going nowhere.
Right.
So how do you, Richard, how do you feel about a variance to separate these buildings? Just a feeling, it doesn't, it's not set in stone, whatever you say.
I abstain.
He abstained.
Right now.
Jim?
I'm kind of undecided as well because I understand the intention of trying to make a bunch of separate units and look, make it a little village looking, but I also feel as though with the right architectural design, it might, it could be more pleasing to have a single structure all broken up and done in a, I don't know. I'd have to, I'm not an architect.
If I may to the board, just again, I think this house was built, what, in the 1800s? It's an older home. So again, looking at that, and then if we were to tear that down and to build 14 units, you know, it's, that was our initial thought as well, as far as...
You could add to it.
Right.
I understand.
There would be complaint either way, to be honest, but one of the things is soil topography. Obviously, we have difficult terrain moving with that incline. So, you know, if it's something where I need to submit to you going through each of those statutory requirements and discuss that, I can.
All right. Let's see how you feel about the...
It's a lot.
You're still undecided as well?
It's just, it's a lot to think about and to try and evaluate.
Well, let me summarize it out, how the board feeling. I know deep inside the board would like the building separated, but this is the leverage to say, a lot, maybe you could cut the units down. That's how I feel personally, and so I think that's what, that's what they're going to. I mean, if they, it feels like if you wanna stick with the same numbers, they're not comfortable with the variance. If you cut down the numbers, they might. I'm not saying they will, they might. So that's my idea. It makes sense, Rich?
Yes, it makes sense. Yes, it makes sense. And it's also nice the fact that it's all gonna be just residential. You're not gonna be dealing with state stepping on everybody's toes where we come into it.
Yeah, this is...
We really can't say much other than what color flowers and what kind of trees go in. We appreciate that you're here, coming at it, listening to this, so I just wanna say that.
Thank you, and this is, you know, privately funded. This is a retirement plan, so I appreciate you acknowledging that.
All right, so why don't you go back, discuss with your client what you wanna do? Come back, we'll see about the variance.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then before we start hushing out that site plan and going back and forth, let's decide where the basic thing, whether we're going for the variance or not, and the number of units, final number of units.
Okay, so do you want, and again, I don't, Phil Sear, as far as the peer review, I'm not sure where he is on that.
I wouldn't go to peer review until we decide on numbers.
I'm not sure if, have you, can we ask him if he's, we submitted that, I wanna say three weeks ago.
You might bring up a lot of time for nothing if we say no to multiple buildings.
I'm trying to save your time and money.
Okay.
Let me ask, Veronica, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
So what do you think about the variance?
I mean, I'm gonna agree with the board at this point. You know, I would need time to think about it more. And, you know, again, I don't have the plans in front of me, so it's hard for me to really give a specific, I just go with, you know, what the board is.
All right, very good, thank you.
So what I propose then is a continuance for a month till 7/12.
I would propose come back the next year and see what your client wants to do, and you gain some time.
Yeah, 7/12.
Come with the, no, it's the 28th. Come on the 28th, and then you have time, and your client have time to think what he wants to do. Is he set on these numbers, or he wants to fight it, not fight it, work with the board, not work with the board?
No, I already know he wants to work with the board, so...
So come up with the...
I want the 12th, please. I would like the 12th for a date.
Oh, you wanna, you wanna months to come back?
She needs your time.
Okay. And in the meantime, you need to check on these grades, okay? And the widths. Maybe go see Captain Smith just quick to see if he's okay with that width for the fire truck, that 13 feet, because one place you have that curb.
Yep.
We'll have time to, this way will give us time to read the planning board comments. They made a lot of sense for us, a bunch of them. They did talk about a handicap unit. I don't think you mandate unless you have over 25 units for a handicap unit. I don't think you have to have one.
There wasn't anything proposed as a handicap.
I think it's only when you're inviting the public onto your lot, which we're not doing.
I don't think, no, I think they said it should be, I read it quick, I was out the door.
Well, I think I heard that it would be nice to...
No handicap spot, so they were asking if...
Right, visitor parking in ADA.
Okay, all right, I understand.
So if we have the 12th, if there is revised plans, which I anticipate, then we could propose those to the peer engineer, maybe talk to them beforehand and then come to you on the 12th. So that's why I would like the two week, the month.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
In the meantime, feel free to reach out, any of the board member, discuss a quick, like, quick answer, not that long.
So just a reminder to everybody in the audience that it's July 12th will be the next meeting.
All right, so let's get a motion going.
I make a motion that we continue till July 12th.
I'll second that.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Veronica?
She might be...
I can, I, myself, Nazir, aye. So let's continue until the 12th.
Excellent, thank you.
Very well, thank you. Okay, before we go forward, before we close, we need Mr. Larson on a membership renewal.
I'm all in favor.
Pardon me?
I said I'm all in favor.
No.
Seconded.
We have, have somebody heard from Jake?
Nope, nothing. His answer machine's full, and I've shot three texts to him, and he's not answering nothing. I mean, the last time he left, he was sick. He was, had stomach problems, and that's the last I've heard from him.
We have to reach out to see what he wants to do.
I know that the planning department assistant has reached out to him, and he's expressed a desire to stay with the board. But, you know, maybe he's having some health issues or some personal issues that we...
But previously...
Going back to Troy, I think that the selectmen need a recommendation from us to renew his sentence.
Right, but I think as we, previously, what we said, if you miss a lot, I mean, believe me, I love Jake, if you miss a lot, huh?
Well, I'm gonna leave it alone.
You thought maybe we'd make Jake, make Troy...
No, I just, the amount of time, I mean, his attendance and...
Right, that's what I was trying to say.
This is what I'm trying to say, because in the previous times...
I understood it was only, you was...
Prostrated hearings.
Right, so that's why we should, I think we should reach out to Jake and maybe recommend that Mr. Larson becomes a permanent member and Jake...
An alternate.
An alternate. Because I don't think, if we have ever get appealed, I don't think we'll have a good foot to stand on, is always alternate, alternate.
I mean, I agree that, I agree that...
I think so. I think it's a good idea, make, if you have a full member, to have them on them.
Right, because like I said, and he agrees, Mr. Buckley, if we ever go to court and we have, always use an alternate, I think it's not as strong as regular members. All right, so that being said, anyway, so our recommendation to Mr. Troy Larson for renewal, all in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye, Jim?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Okay, so are you aye for yourself?
Troy, would you like to vote yourself?
I'll aye myself.
And we'll discuss this matter with Jake, and we'll see where we go from there. He's gonna have to appear. All right, very well, okay, yes?
I know Chris Conti had expressed some positive, some interest in coming back onto the board.
I mean, he can, he can. We don't appoint him, we just recommend, that's the selectmen job.
And there's the same process, fill in the application?
Yeah, if he wants, I mean, it's open to everyone, and everyone's listening. We have opening for another associate member if you'd like to participate and volunteer. All right, so that being said, if any, no more comments, we could...
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second by Troy and Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jim? And myself, Nazir, aye?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm sure Veronica, she's aye, and I think, all right, thank you very much for tonight. Thank you.
And thank you again, Veronica, for signing on.